It feels like today. And it feels like there are a lot of new things going on, a new year. And I see someone new that's sitting up here at the panel. You know, we had an extra seat all these years. And we finally filled it with our county administrator, Frank Baker, Baker Street. But Frank, I look around, I'm a little bit lonely up here. And perhaps you can take some action on that, like you take some action on so many other things. Maybe introductions are in order.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to do that because obviously you don't have a forum right now. But I think to conduct the business of the people, I think you're gonna have to have a forum. So it's my honor to introduce the post commissioners. We'll start with post one. On the far side of the room over here, post one, Commissioner Ron Davis. Please welcome Ron. Commissioner Davis is an IT professional with 22 years of experience in infrastructure management and information security. He recently received the Certified County Commissioners' recognition from the ACCG and EGA, that's Carl Vincent, and the Association of County Commissioners. Congratulations on that. That's quite an honor, this stuff to do. One thing that I found interesting about Commissioner Davis, and I didn't know this, he is a huge baseball fan, those of you who know him. And he loves Atlanta Braves. But I didn't know this until recently, that he actually tried out for the Kansas City Royals baseball club when he was in high school.
George Brooks works baseball at the Times today. I'm sure that's the only reason we didn't like him.
And in true Baker Street style, for those of you who know me, that's my nickname from the song, actually, Baker Street. One of the things that I find interesting is that Commissioner Davis' favorite song is "I Won't Back Down" by Tom Petty. And he actually likes the version of Johnny Cash, the Tom Petty version. So ladies and gentlemen, I give you post commissioner one, Ron Davis. All right, post commissioner two, Commissioner Sandy Caker. I'm excited to introduce Commissioner Caker this morning. She has a twin. I didn't know that until actually yesterday, when she and I talked a little bit. She's an Air Force brat. A lot of us are. I'm a Marine Corps brat myself. And she was born and raised in Florida. And I know from time to time, I'm sure you miss that Florida weather, especially when it's all this rain. She's a miner, she's a go-getter, and she's very resilient. And those are things that she had mentioned to us when we were talking the last couple of days, last couple of weeks. Her favorite color is blue. I think that's great. I love blue, too. And again, in true Baker Street style, and I love this song myself, her favorite song, one of her favorite songs is "By Garth Brooks to Dance." Ladies and gentlemen, post commissioner Sandy Caker. At this time, I want to introduce the post three commissioner, Mr. Chuck Hart. Commissioner Hart, he prior to his priorities. Excuse me just a moment. I was up late watching Clemson. His priorities in life, he hasn't been in disorder, made family friends. He wants to serve others like others would serve, like other people would serve, and he wants to finish well. That's admirable. We all want to finish well, we want to be strong. He gets a lot of kidding from his buddies because he enjoys not only fishing and golfing. I stoned his county administrator here after this meeting. He gets kidded when he talks about the fact that he goes every once in a long quarter, he gets a pedicure with his wife. And I'm pleased to announce another person that loves Garth Brooks to Dance, and that's Commissioner Hart. Ladies and gentlemen, post commissioner three. And last but not least, post commissioner four, Mr. Brian Stover. Commissioner Stover can best describe himself as an entrepreneur with a generous side and a great sense of humor. So we're gonna find out about that in a couple of minutes. And it's true, I've gotten to know him a little bit as I have the other board members coming through the last couple of months with him. And he does have a good sense of humor. He's married to his wife Rachel, and he has three children. And I'm pleased to announce that he's a 1994 graduate of Pauline County High School. So that's great. I won't tell you what I was doing in 1994. I feel a little old today, and tired from that. And one of his favorite songs is "My Way" by Elvis Presley. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you the post commissioners and the chairman of the board.
Before I call being the order, Frank Baker was the Atlanta Clemson president for a few years. And that's really kind of unusual because he didn't go to Clemson, but huge Clemson fans have tried to pull him down off the ceiling this morning. So at this time, I will call the January 8, 2019 work session, which is his meeting to order. And Brian, if you bring forward the citizens wishing to speak, you have a phone that you still have on. I'm gonna turn that off. And we've got quite a few elected officials, so pretty close to me there. It's Frank Moran, the councilman at Hiram, and looking around. Help me out, y'all see an elected official back there? Yeah, yeah, he's just dwarfed there by David. Jerry Henson, the city councilman with Dallas, somebody to have your feedback.
Jason Anvatarian.
Yes, not the end, the school board member, Jason Anvatarian. Welcome, Jason, thank you for being here. I appreciate the help, guys, and see everybody. And it is quite an honor, and always makes me happy to have Pastor Johnny McFerris in our midst. He's done so much in Pauline County. Currently serves on the tax assessor board. He's on the library board. He is on the county health board. Somewhere there, finds time to drive the mulch mow tree once a week and help prepare young men from ministry. And Johnny's community is made a lot stronger by your presidents. At this time, if you would bring our invocation and lead us into place to flag state jury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, let us pray. Our great God and Father, we come again before your throne of grace and mercy. Thank you, your Lord God, for the many blessings we enjoy as a great nation, a great county, and a great city. Lord God, we lift up our commissioners now. We pray that they'll be unity, cooperation, that you're binding them together. We pray, Lord God, to give them the wisdom as Solomon asked for, to lead your great people, to lead this county. We pray also for the citizens of Pauline, Lord God, that they will be proud warriors to lift up and hold up those who are in office, to do those things that are pleasing in your sight. We pray for our first respondents, and all of the public servants in Pauline County. Now, Father, we just thank you now. We lift them up one by one and name by name, that you'll be with them, give them good help and the wisdom they need to carry out the assignment that the citizens of Pauline elected them to do. For we ask this all in Christ's name, amen. Let our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own.
Pastor McFerris pastors the solid ministry that has its church. It's a great place to go worship. So I would encourage that under minutes, the December 11, 2018 work session match and the December 11, four minute minutes are available for review. Under announcements, we started something new in the county, which is Employee of the Month. And so we've had two months where names are submitted by department heads or by fellow employers, fellow employees. And for the month of this month, kind of skipping around there, but for this month, this is the first month, December, which is Deanna Morrison works in the tax assessor's office. And then Dee Hunter, there in that picture right there, who works in elections. They get a closer parking spot and a half day off. So we look forward to having this morale builder around for the rest of the year. We have on the board commissioners, mission, vision, and values that we initiated two years ago. And you know, words have meaning, whether it's during a wedding, whether it's an oath of office, like three of our new commissioners took on December 21st, or in many other occasions. Words are significant and have a meaning. And since this is the first meeting of 2019, I thought it was valuable to review those and kind of review our vows as commissioners. And rather than do that for my peer, I've asked three citizens, I only see two of them here at this point. But we'll start with Mr. Tommy Morris, who's gonna share with us and review for us our mission. And giving them the recognition, if they want to say anything else about that mission or just encouragement or accountability to us, that would be great also. So Tommy, thank you for doing that this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was real sick last night about midnight watching a football game. I came here this morning and find that Frank is a big Clemson fan. I was hoping I wouldn't see a Clemson fan today, but Clemson was a better team last night, congratulations. It is good to be with you today, three new commissioners. They've asked me to read over the mission statement. And I did that, and I'll add a few comments, and we'll take very long, just a few comments I'd like to share with you today. The Board of Commissioners and staff will, with unity and purpose, work to enhance citizens' quality of life by maximizing resources to make Pauline County a better place to live, work, and play. What does that really mean? To me, it means unity and purpose. In today's world, we're kind of fishbowl. Everyone knows what's going on in county government, state government, federal government. And so if you are working together, people will know that. If you're not working together, they'll know that also. And we talked a lot about bringing new businesses into the county, trying to bring new businesses in so that will enhance the residents who live here, so they're not even paying as much property tax. Change that tax base and bring new businesses in. But if a company is wanting to come into Pauline and they sense that there's not unity on the governing board, the outcome is probably not gonna be good towards landing that company. So I think that's really important for you to consider. Does that mean all of you have to have same ideas about the best way to solve the problems? I don't think so. I think it's good to have diversity of ideas if you're talking about different issues. What's really important, you've got to be united in deciding the most pressing issues. And I would urge you to get feedback from your constituents and then have your discussions about the best ways to solve the problems that are facing Pauline County. Much has been said about new businesses and the infrastructure. I tend to think of infrastructure having two different things going for it. If you have more infrastructure, you can bring more businesses in. If you have more infrastructure, like water and sewer, you're also taking care of furnishing a need to many residents in this county, they do not have water and sewer right now. So water and sewer improvements will bring in new businesses, and it will also work to take care of a need for residents in this county. So I would hope that you would take a look at that, along with many others that you'll be looking at. You're going to be faced with a lot of real challenges. You'll probably hear, well, I didn't want you to do this, I didn't want you to do that. And you know, it's gonna be hard to get agreement, you'll make mistakes, all of us make mistakes at some point in time. So you learn to your mistakes. But you're faced with real challenges, but I'm convinced that this board will work together with unity and purpose to make our county a better place to live, work, and play. And I thank you for being willing to serve in this past.
Thanks so much, Tommy. I had asked a young lady to read the vision and to share her ideas. Okay, you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, great, Sandy, so grateful to you for also coming to share the vision and then make any comments that you would like to.
Thank you. First, I'm happy you're here to everybody, all of y'all here, and I'll be back in the back, too. Thank you. Thank you for the willingness to serve. I'm here to read the vision. The Pauline County Board of Commissioners will operate as an effective and efficient governing body on behalf of all the citizens of Pauline County to make Pauline County the preeminent place in the Atlanta metropolitan area to live, work, and play. Key words there, live, work, and play. I think those are very, very important here. I think the most important thing that I can do as a citizen is to say a prayer for each and every one of you daily, a sincere prayer for, to be prosperous, to make the right decisions, to be diligent in your work. And I wish all five of you the absolute very best. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thanks so much, Sandy. And for our values, it's got the word heart. I've asked Reverend Court Franklin if he would come and do the honor of reading those values and make any comments that he would like to, for this new guard here.
Good morning to each and every one of you. I will read the values for Pauline County, and then at the end of the reading of the values, I will issue a charge to each and one of you as commissioners. The values state that Pauline County, Georgia, is a community that is unique in the Atlanta metropolitan area in its opportunities, diverse tenancy, and recreational programs, but most of all, in its heart. The Pauline County Board of Commissioners will honor these values. H for honesty, equality, and openness in government. E for excellence in working with all members of government and supporting citizen involvement. A for accountability, in order to ensure financial and personal integrity. R for respect within the county government and to our citizens. And T is for teamwork and transparency, in order to promote equality decision-making. And now I would charge you as a board, in the presence of all these witnesses and the presence of God Almighty, to uphold the principles and attendance and the ethics of these values. I charge you as a board to be committed to each other, always knowing that this board is only as strong as you are unified. Remember that you are a community with each other and not in competition with each other. I ask that you pray for one another, support one another, and when you don't agree on a particular course of action, disagree without becoming disagreeable. I charge you to harness the drum major instinct. When you feel the desire to be out front, when you feel the desire for self-recognition and not team accomplishment, harness that desire. But if you must leave, leave in the service of Pauline County. If you must leave, leave in a demonstration of ethic behavior before one another. If you must leave, leave in upholding the values of Pauline County. As I charge you today, we accept this charge and be committed to all of the citizens of Pauline County, and favor this charge to responsibilities of the office for the duration of your term. If you will, be responsible for that. Simply say, "I will." Amen.
The next citizen to speak there, I always speak for me personally, thanks so much. Thank you very much all three, because of the time you've been here. I think we need to visit your church also, Court. I've been there a couple of times and always enjoy it immensely. Next, we'd like to recognize our Pauline County Department Heads, which all got the memo and wore their gray today. But we're gonna have their picture on the front page of the paper next week, so that time they can read the papers and see their names. I'm just gonna ask them all to come up for a photo opportunity, a kind of half moon circle here in front, and we'll get a picture of everyone. And this is just our recommitment to our Department Heads for all they do in their leadership of their individual staffs. No man's land. That's the back of our unit right there. And last number of announcements, I've set aside 10 minutes. 10 minutes because I wanted each of the commissioners, of course, we're three of you. But again, it's a new year, and I've got things on my heart, I'm sure Ryan's got things on his. So two minutes each, that would be the 10 minutes for us to just state something as far as what our vision for 2019 is, how we see 2019, how we hope to make it better. So I'm gonna start with, nothing about baseball, dude. Start with a baseball player up here. I guess to say former baseball player at this point. They haven't called back since the mid-'90s, I don't think they're gonna call him now. This interview actually felt a little bit like high school basketball, where they're introducing the team, and you're around, and everybody cheers. I tried to tell David I wasn't newly elected, but he wasn't hearing that. First, let me just say, congratulations to our coworkers up here and the board working each other, and we've already had some conversations now. So 2019's gonna shape up to be a good year. I'm excited about it. This was mentioned during the reading of mission, vision, and values, two of the things that are needed, that we have to address day one, we've already started, is water and sewer infrastructure. And as we would expand water for folks that don't have it, sewer people, the needed businesses coming in, need the infrastructure. We've had our December meeting with the last board sparked some conversation about water. And so I'm excited, I've already had talks with Brian, and we're gonna, here's the opportunity to get left off with the water issues there, post four. And then post four and two is where it's needed most, and three and one on the east side of the county have a little less of a need there. But we're gonna work together to get the last of that done. Also, two big projects come to mind, our reservoir and our jail. We're gonna take oversight, we've got some hitups in those projects to this point, we're gonna, we're just gonna take some teamwork, working together, and seeing those projects through. And as we do, and I'm not gonna go on about all of them, I don't know where I am on the two-minute mark, but I'm sure there are other things, but I'm sure they'll get covered here. But I am excited about a new year, and I hope you all are, too.
I don't have time with you. I say I don't have two minutes.
Okay, that works now, just two minutes. We have extra time at the end, Frank can tell us about the football game this afternoon. Post two commissioner, Ms. Sandy Caker.
Well, I'm gonna read mine. And mine is more for the future, not just for 2019, just to let you know. By 2049, our county is expected to grow by almost 74 percent. We need to make sure that we grow smart. We need to work on our infrastructure and ensure it will hold our future growth, like Ron said. We need to work closely with the IBA and EDO to help bring light industry into Pauline to alleviate some of the tax burden on our property owners. We also need to work hand in hand with the government department, school system, the cities, and the chamber to build Pauline in a manner highlighting and keeping the unique character it holds today. But also to promote business opportunities so that our citizens don't have to leave our county to go to work. Thinking about the future of our children and grandchildren, my focus is to work not only for today's living, but for tomorrow's as well.
Outstanding. I want to give that over myself, and go to the post three commissioner, Mr. Chuck Hart.
All right, I'm like Sandy, I have to read some stuff so I won't forget it all. But you know, we're reminded in Proverbs, the King's heart, it's in the hand of the Lord, and he guides those waters how he do it. But you know, he does it through people like ourselves. I do feel called to do this, and I do believe that he calls people to do this. I feel like you've got a board up here that's sincere and hard, and that they all just want to do what's best for this county. I feel like we had that before, but I also feel like there was just some differences of opinions on how to get there. I have reached out to the older of the past commissioners, and they've all been helpful. And I think that going forward, we'll patch all those wounds up and we'll be able to move forward. I'm so thankful to be a steward for this county, and I will serve it to the best of my ability. You know, I spent the last 10 months just really getting to know the department heads, the county people, the citizens in general, and the private sector investors. And in efforts that, you know, we can formulate some plans to help move this thing forward. You know what's so funny, is I come up with all this stuff I wanted to say on these porches, but you know what I figured out, was listening was the best thing I could do. These people told me a lot of things, and I heard the same things over and over. And these three people who got up here and spoke, I mean, they touched on every one of these things that I heard on these porches. So there's a lot of common goals here. And I think going forward, one of the things I want to look at really is making sure that the services provided, you know, are the services that y'all have grown to expect. I feel as our county administrator, he's set this tone for the county, and I saw it in each one of these department heads, as they stood in front of me, I liked that. It's a team spirit, and everybody seems to be on board. I've had these guys who are reaching out to me, you know, even before I was in office, just keeping people up to date. If you ask them for something, they'll do it for you. I'm glad that everybody seems to have pretty much a servant's heart here, because that's what we're gonna need to push this stuff forward. I know we have, we've had some issues and retentions, particularly in public safety, you know, and I know there's some people working hard on some long-term goals to put some things in place that will help, you know, that retention to be possible here in this county. I look forward to working on that with them. I plan on working with this VOC to create an environment that encourages businesses to not just come to this county, but to want to come to this county, because there is opportunity here. You know, I think I said it once before in something, I had talked to one of the reporters or something, and I told them, I said, you know, we've got people. You know, it's big, we got people. I mean, so we've got workers, and we've got consumers, you know. So all we gotta do is just keep creating these environments, taking these opportunities and working with private sector on just making little pockets of this thing start growing. And before you know it, it's gonna be big, and it's gonna be contagious. And I want to tell you something, it's not just gonna help the counties, it's gonna help higher-ups in Dallas. There aren't two more charming cities, you know, when you walk through them. I mean, these things could look like a woodstock. I mean, I don't mean to draw parallels, but you know, you can. And we need to emulate those people who have done things right, and we need to look into these things, and I think that's what we've got to look forward to. But most of all, you know, I want to unify this VOC. I mean, Rachel, you said it right. I mean, we just, we need unification, and that's what's gonna draw people. But we need to be unified more than just us, but we need to be unified with the board of education. We need to be unified with these city council people, we need to be unified with our state representatives. Guys, I mean, we're not realizing the full potential, I don't feel like, and I'm not, I just, I want us to go that extra step, you know, and cultivate those relationships with those, you know, our colleagues in the city and the state level, so that we can do other things. You know, to be creative with some solutions to some of these problems. I think some of these problem solutions are just a conversation of life. Most of all, you know, guys, I'm a guy who creates boundaries and I hold accountability. I do that for guys that's worked for me, I've done it in my own personal life. Matter of fact, I don't hold anybody in this county more than I do. Matter of fact, I don't hold anybody in my county more than I do myself. But, but I promise you this, I'll always be approachable, I'll always be understanding, and I'll always be fair. But I, you've got to give me the chance to be that, you know. I saw a lot of things go on that, you know, where people were reaching out and saying some stuff, and I was like, guys, just come to me, and I invited them, my phone number and stuff, and that's what I want you to do. You know, we, if there's a problem, you know, let's fix the problem. Man, I invite all the constructive criticism, you know, that you can throw my way, because I do want to grow in this role, and I want to succeed in this role, because with our success becomes y'all's success. You know, just, just please note that, you know, full transparency, I love, you know, I want to be an open door, because that's that check and balance and accountability piece that just started. But anyway, guys, I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but I do appreciate you, and I'm thankful to my God, first of all, and thankful to my family, and thankful to the citizens of this county for putting their trust in us. And just know this, we're going to trip, we're going to fall on our face from time to time, and we're going to be moving, and we're going to be trying, and we're going to be working.
And post four commissioner, Mr. Brian Stover, you've got the hardest biggest Texas and very charitable man.
Well, I'm going to start off, I probably don't have about 30 seconds left, I have to show. I'll probably get up. No, I just want to do a little joke, very civil, but I really want to start off with thanking God, and looking after me through this adventure, and my family, friends, the support of the post four, believing in me through the self-process. Some of that, one of the things I plan on working on as a commissioner who's economic about me, is something I ran on and plan on making top priority. I know we have challenges such as infrastructure, and I know we cannot make changes overnight. But if we do, but if we don't ever start taking that first step, then we'll never get there to where we want to be. And as I, like a lot of people that grew up in Pauling, would probably love to see it stay spot, but that's long gone and I don't remember that. So I believe that if we don't start controlling our role, then all we will have one day is rip tops. We need more commercial and industrial to offset our tax base for the homeowners in Pauling. Also, our society is moving to more of a live, workplace community, and if we don't start attracting jobs in Pauling, then all we will have one day is people who have to live here, and I'd rather have a county official live here. So that, I promise to work hard for just not post four, but all of Pauling. Thank you.
I want to finish up here. I'm so thankful to have my wife here, Ken. I know Rachel, Julie, and Steve, and you all are the best part of getting us through the day, and when we come home, we're kind of gruff and, you know, maybe a little bit upset, having you all there makes all the difference in a role. We all can work, we all can work, but together we win. What I mean by that is it's, it's the board, it's the staff, it's the citizens, it's the constitutional officers, and everyone else. But we're the ones that have to come together, and that's already been mentioned, it's not just five people. So we need your ideas, we want your ideas, and again, to echo others, our door's open and we answer the telephone. So, you know, I'm usually the eternal optimist, but now two years in, I really want to be clear and frank, because Pauling County has serious challenges. We've got a big financial challenge. We have a tax balance that's way out of balance. And our citizens pick up where they pay 89 percent of the dollars that creates the revenue that we need to provide necessary services. Polk County, just to our west and farther from Atlanta, their citizens only pay 73 percent. Cobb County is down to 65 percent. Douglas County, their, their citizens pay 62 percent. Remember, ours is 89 percent. Why? Because they have more commercial and light industrial tax revenue than we do. We have got to have commercial enterprise and industry to offset our very disproportionate tax balance. I can't really emphasize that enough, it's a, it's a big problem. And Tessa's sick today, but she was in the office with me and Frank just before a couple hours. What are we talking, we're talking about next year's budget. And, you know, it's, it's just always going to be tight for a while, anyway. So, you know, we don't have a whole lot of public, publicly owned property out there to, to offer. Mr. Reynolds is in the room, and he knows a lot more of that, than, a lot more about that than I do, but he, he keeps us informed. I flew airplanes for a living for a long time, and, you know, if this board of commissioners had some kind of magic dust, and you've heard of crop dusting, if I could put that magic dust and fly over our 310 square miles of beautiful property and land, then I'd get in the plane right after we adjourned from this meeting. But we don't have that. You know, if we're looking, if we're running for election, looking for a magic wand, we even or anybody else has that. So what we've got is hard work, and again, working together, that, that we might win. Last year, and just to wrap up, we had two mini-conferences, and they were guided by the Carl Vincent Institute to talk about where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. A lot of the staff was there, there were a lot of stakeholders in business, educational stakeholders that were there. And really, our, our summary was, let's use what we've got. When 650,000 people get on the Silver Comet Trail, we've got beautiful cities, and we've got historical names to come see recreational things that are of great value. We're going to work on tourism and playing that as, as at least a spark to get us going into the future. And we've had the tourism group from the Georgia Department of Economic Development out here. So, you know, I'm well over my two minutes also, but we're going to work hard together and make sound and careful decisions so that, that we are careful and strategic with your money. I always say, the government doesn't have any money, and we're going to use that money spiritually and carefully to move our county forward, and that's what I commit to you as, as my vision. And I'm so glad to be here with this board, and thankful for that also. So under invited guests, we have none. Under bid awards, we have none. We do have a need for five minutes of closed session, executive session, for personnel. So, and we don't really have a long meeting, we've got a few reports when we come back, but if you can stay with those reports for five minutes, great. And I wish you a Happy New Year again, and thank you for coming out to recognize the new year and the newly constituted board. And would someone make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you've got, a motion is a second. Motion is a second, all those in favor say aye.
Can you discuss that just briefly?
Yes.
Georgia law allows us to take the business out of, out of the room, personnel is one of the reasons we are allowed to do that, it doesn't require it, but it does allow it. When we're back there, we have an attorney with us who keeps us in line, makes sure we don't cross out of what we're allowed to be back there for. Inside the Open Meetings Act, there is, there's verbiage about what is or is not allowed specifically about personnel. And I hesitate to go back there without attorney guidance. Everybody just remembers what you guys are going to executive session for. I would, I would say let's just do this here.
Okay.
If, if that's okay, and that's, that's my person.
We, we do not have an attorney on the panel at the present time. Have you read that we can do the business in here?
Yeah, we're never required to take it out.
Okay. So, we won't go to executive session?
Well, you do need to vote on that motion, that's my opinion. We need to vote on that motion.
We need to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, you can withdraw the motion, or we can, we can vote on the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Hart withdrew the motion to go into executive session. So then we have nothing to vote on. So we're going to say the five minutes is over with, and since I'm the one that's supposed to nominate for this action item anyway, I'm going to.
Well, I think at this point, we would typically go on reports for committees and departments, but Dave, if you have something you'd like to add to new business, I think now's the time to make that motion, add new business. And then a majority of the board can, a majority of the board can end that motion.
Okay, so here's the motion. Make a motion for action at the 2:00 PM meeting to appoint Tally Richson Cable, P.A., as the county attorney and authorize, and authorize the chairman to enter into contract for such purposes. So that's the motion. Do I hear a second? A second by Commissioner Kaker and a certain discussion. Hearing non-audience in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Four ayes in one day, so the period is four one, and that will be added to the act number two. So at this time, I have.
You have another item to add to the agenda?
I think I.
There's something about the fact that you have a county attorney. Is she, was she resigned?
Yes.
What was that?
During the week. The.
I'd be the sir.
The interim position actually is considered available for a nomination, a change.
We have a county attorney until we fire her or until she resigns?
The interim doesn't need to be terminated. Sir, is, yeah, I see you. Jason, you were discounting it, not so much.
Could he go to my, there's people downstairs, I believe, and folks watching online, they're appearing.
Good morning. Thank you for calling me for, obviously I am not the county attorney, the interim county attorney, Lonny Skipper, but as a citizen of Pauling County and as an attorney of all, happy to give you my opinion on that. You have, I think, back in the day, back in March, Skipper was appointed as the interim county attorney. Interim simply means you're the county attorney until the successor is appointed, right? You're not serving a term, you're interim. It's like an interim position for a leader of an agency. When the new leader is appointed through the proper procedure, then that new appointment will take over for that position by operation of law. That's my thought on that, and we have been answering any questions.
Do you know, does the government, the, the, the laws governing Pauling County address the word interim with attorney? I know that we put interim on it when Dave made the nomination for Lonny. I guess it was early September, when that happened, even though we're interim on it, but is interim appears in our ordinances, or is it defined or, or anything like that? You may not know.
Commissioner Davis, I would say that I don't recall the term interim being specifically addressed or defined in the code of ordinances.
So the treating it as such a not requiring resignation or termination is, is based on your definition of the word interim?
When you have, when you have a term that is not defined by a set of ordinances, statutes, then the courts often refer to you simply define it by its common usage as set of ordinances. Thank you.
And I did not bring the March 8th, 2017 minutes with me, but the interim was used in the appointment, just for clarification there.
I wasn't, I wasn't disputing that.
All right, so we have the four one vote, we have that on the 2:00 PM regular session. And as we've been through the agenda here, the next thing on the agenda is reports from committees and departments. We're pleased to have Mary Carol Sheffield from the county extension office, coordinator of the county extension, to bring us up to date. Thanks for being here, Mary Carol.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me. Happy New Year and welcome and welcome back. I'm really excited to be here today and to report to you on the progress of our county extension program, and to thank you for your support. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of our community, the resources of the University of Georgia, many various agriculture and natural resources, family consumer sciences, and 4H and U. So many thanks to you for your support of our work. In the last six months, we had several changes at our office. We brought on several new fantastic staff members, including a new 4H agent, Jason Davis, who lives in the back of the room, and also a couple of new 4H programs assistants, Rhonda Lackley and Rasha Middleton. Rhonda's also back in the back of the room. And we retained our fantastic administrative assistant, Tina Roll, and great 4H program assistant, Kathleen, who learned that's helped us to retain some consistency in our programming. I've provided you guys a copy of our annual report, and there's some extra copies in the back, if anybody's interested in picking one up before you go. Just to highlight some of our, our program successes this year. Our 4H program remains one of the largest and most active in the state, and I always like to, to qualify that and say, we're not just the largest and one of the most active, we're really successful. We have great youth in our county, and our youth are engaged, they're successful, and they are well-rounded, and they represent us in our county and then out in the state too, as part of our 4H program. We've had a STEM focus again this year for our clubs and our judging teams, and we have successful poultry judging and horse judging teams, both those teams placed at our district competitions in the top three. We still have three shooting sports teams that are volunteer-led. We have a BB team, an archery team, a shotgun team, and we're super proud of our BB team placing fifth in the state this year, that's a super competitive event for 4H, and they had a great year. We have a longstanding horse and pony club in the county, led by volunteers as well, Annette Raven, a lot of people named Miss Annette. And out of that, that club came a second-place horse quiz bowl team at the senior match of the state as well. We also had 59 public speaking contest participants this year, and I know everybody's kind of heard that, you know, that people are more afraid to stand up and speak in front of the public, more afraid of that than they are to death, than death. So a lot of people would rather die than get up and stand in front of people and speak. But these 59 kids went and spoke in front of strangers and competed in a minute. And these kids range in age from fifth grade all the way to 12th grade, and of our senior 4Hers, one of them mastered in the horse project, and we have three others who placed in the top three in the state at the 4H State Congress event. We also were recently recognized for our last year's efforts at collecting pop taps from the Ronald McDonald House cherries. We recycled and donated money from 578 pounds of pop taps in our county for that cherry, and we were the largest collection in the Memphis District 4H. So I'm, we want to talk about our other programming areas, our 4H programs, what we're kind of, kind of the cornerstone of what we do, I know everybody's really familiar with it. We have some family consumer science work going on, but we don't have an agent for that. But even though we don't have an agent, we want to provide these services for people in our county, and so we've worked with nearby counties to help us with that. They provide expertise by answering questions on housing, financial questions, food safety and nutrition. And also help us to coordinate programming to Pauling on food safety and health and wellness. And this really enabled us this year to work with our human resources department and bring a little Georgia competition to the wellness program and wellness initiative that the county does for county employees, and that was a lot of fun. Agriculture and natural resources is my primary area, and it remains the heart of what we do. A lot of our 4H work is adding naturally resources related, and we team together really well, and I'm really proud of our office being able to work across this program lines. We continue to collaborate with the water system, keep Pauling beautiful, and local agriculture to provide for outreach. And this year, we had 65 programs that reached 5,922 people. We had 24 volunteers at our annual rivers lab cleanup at White Oak Park this year, and early in the year before our cleanup, we have successive cleanups each year, but we were awarded the Georgia EPD 4H Rivers Lab Award. And we also, very early in the year, collaborated with Kinsaw State, the Department of Natural Resources, the Nature Conservancy, and the Pauling County Water System to organize and host the Raccoon Creek Symposium, highlighting research, education, and conservation in Pauling County, which is our county, although it's not well-recognized, is a really biodiverse and interesting place when it comes. place when it comes to the ecosystem that we have here. One of our greatest treasures is natural resource, and I'm really grateful to work in town where that's the case. Program numbers for those Ag Natural Resources, those sixty-five programs wouldn't be possible without the help of master gardener volunteers. We have lots of 4-H volunteers, but I also have adult master gardener volunteers, Marshall Roucher, too. We know she's one of our master gardener volunteers. And they have donated almost eighteen hundred hours of service last year, and that's valued at more than forty-one thousand dollars. So for me, that's like having an extra staff member for free, and I love those folks. They help me get a whole lot of those programs done. They also, in addition to their programmatic work, have, for the last time they responded, and awarded a local student a thousand dollars scholarship for college, and they've developed and delivered school gardening training this year as a new portion of their programming. So, I just want to thank you again for your support, and please know that you can call on the unity time if you have questions or ideas about programming that might be beneficial to our county, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it.
How's the B B team doing?
They're doing great. They are practicing twice a week, starting in the new year, and we have a new head coach this year, who's doing a fantastic job. We're looking forward to competitions, haven't started yet, but they'll start soon, so we're ramping up for that.
Thank you for here, Carol.
Thank you.
We're always glad to get updates on the growth in the permits from Pauling County in the last six or eight months. Ms. Lippman has come to report on a regular basis, so, and thank you for bringing us up
And while this is getting up, I'm going to date myself a little bit in here, but nineteen ninety-four, I was a first-year grad student at Clemson University after graduating from the University of Georgia, and I can say that last night's game was much better for my heart rate than, or last night's game was better than the two thousand and eighteen game, but it's not to show that we're number two team is number one. So, and if, anybody who knows me knows I love quotes, and head coach David Sweeney is a very quotable guy, and I just wanted to start off with one of his quotes. It is, "To be an overachiever, you have to be an overbeliever." He has a lot of quotes about teams. I have a whole page for anybody who's interested, but on behalf of the community development team, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy new year, and I know we look forward to working with you. I do have some information specifically about building permits and business licenses, which I know have been some hot topics, and we just have, just some summary information from two thousand and eighteen. We had six thousand one hundred and thirty-five permits issued. You can see the trends, they tend to go up in the summer months and fall down in the winter months. Our building inspectors did twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-eight inspections last year. I know single-family development is a hot topic here, so I wanted to kind of go back to two thousand and ten, since the last instance was done. We've issued six thousand nine hundred and seventy-four permits since then, but please note the difference between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and seventeen. Between two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, we had a twenty percent growth of permits. Between two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, we had two percent growth in single-family permits. So I believe as national and Atlanta trends go, that the, the single-family permits are slowing down, so I think that, that will be interesting to see where that goes in the new year. I don't see anything, any more twenty percent increases. Population projections, based on post, if you look, and I think my numbers, I track numbers based on issuance of C O's, and I think if you look at what the state projects, they project our population right about one hundred and sixty thousand, and that's what we show, and so this chart just shows the difference between each of the four posts, and you can see that most of the growth has occurred in post four, they've had about thirty-five percent growth, and the county overall has had right under fifteen percent growth. Next, I wanted to go back and look at the comparison of single-family permits as well as non-residential permits. This is a little hard to read, I apologize, but it goes back to two thousand and eleven, and you can definitely see positive growth in that, but definitely that single-family detached outweighed non-residential by a long amount. But when you compare the value of construction, the deal color is non-residential growth and, or value, and the orange is single-family. There are a couple spikes in there. Two thousand and twelve is when the hospital was permitted. I believe they did the second floor in two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, and two thousand and seventeen is the reservoir, and two thousand and eighteen is the jail. So those are technically non-residential growth. Moving on to business licenses, we currently have three thousand ninety-five business licenses in the county. The chart attached to it just shows the amount of new licenses and renewals. We had six hundred and seventy-seven new business licenses in two thousand and eighteen, and we break down between home occupations and commercial. We have two thousand three hundred and nineteen home occupations, or seventy-three percent, and eight hundred and fifty are commercial locations. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if there's any other information anyone would like, I'd love to get with you, and again, thank you for letting me do this every quarter now.
We have no one who's signed up for public participation on agenda items. Under consent agenda, we'll discuss action on four consent agenda items. Number one is to approve Chairman Carmichael's designation of Commissioner, of Commissioner Brian Stover as Chairman Pro Tem. Number two is to appoint Mr. Jim Henson as the representative for the City of Dallas on the Planning and Zoning Commission, returning in December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Number three is to appoint Harold Lynn Cole to the Republican Airport Authority, three year term, in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And number four is to appoint Ms. Wendy Turnbill as the Chairman's Representative on the Planning and Zoning Board, returning in December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of the consent agenda items to new business?
Yes, sir. Please move number one and number three.
We will move number one and three to new business. Any other requests? In our old business, we have none, and the new business, we now have, number one new business is to appoint Chairman Carmichael's designation of the...
I think number one new business would be, the discussion would be, the ad for county attorney. Is that added to the new business?
That's for the Saturday.
I'm sorry, I can't read.
Yeah, the motion is for the T P M agenda.
So we're not even going to discuss that in work session?
No. It, we, we're, it's come out of closed session and handed to the agenda at two P M. It was never intended to be discussed in this work session.
Nice.
Hey, Dave, I'd like to move number two and number four to a clock.
Number two and number four are the consent agenda to a two o'clock. If you want to move those, Commissioner, we can, we can talk about those now.
They're going to, they're going to, just a, just a location, they're on the consent agenda. If we move them, we move, we can, we have the option, if you want, to move them to new business. They'll be on the consent agenda, as, as they are before you spoke, they'll be on the two o'clock at under consent agenda. If you want to move them under new business, it would just change where they are.
Okay.
We're going to leave, we're going to leave those on the consent agenda.
Now, what I see is the requests are that we have one and three by Commissioner Davis, and two and four by Commissioner Stover, all of them being moved to regular business that we can talk about now.
Okay, so all of those will be moved into new business?
Yes, that can be discussed now. Okay, so the, the other motion is for the two P M that involves T R C, Tally Richson Cable, but discussion now. Approve Chairman Carmichael's designation of Commissioner Brian Stover as Chairman Pro Tem. We'll discuss that now.
Well, we can, we can go ahead and discuss that. I'm a little bit alarmed with the situation here, having this discussion. For those in the room, I had a conversation with Dave last week, and I hope we wouldn't have to have this discussion here. In September twenty seventeen, Dave came and asked me to fill this role. At the time, I told him I appreciated it, but I wasn't, I'd been with the Servant County Commissioner, and I was, also wasn't, I wasn't a senior member of the board, so we nominated, he nominated till I found out, and then Todd helped carry that role. I still think it should be senior member on the board, but granted, that makes it weird because I'm here as a senior member on the board. And I had this conversation with Dave, and Dave understands that things have happened, and you may not want me to have this designation, and I'm fine with that. What, what I, what I do feel very strongly is, this is a lot to put on the commissioner who's random at his first meeting. So I asked you to put it off for a year, and you said you weren't going to, and I asked you to put it off for six months, and you weren't going to. I, I think Brian will be fine, but it's a lot to put on him at his first, first meeting, and so that's, that's my concern here. So don't make it me, that's fine, but, but don't, don't put something on, on someone that they're not, they're not ready, prepared to take on that responsibility. And that's, and that's why I'm, and I've spoken with Brian about this, I spoke with Brian yesterday, so he even knows my heart where I'm coming from, and he knows this is not, nothing personal on him, and we had a good conversation about that yesterday, but I do, I do feel very strongly about that, and so that's why I asked this to be moved.
Okay, well, I appreciate your remarks. It's what we need to do, but if someone wants to comment on, I certainly do have reasons I don't want to detail. We need a pro tem, the sign checks, the oversee division, so I think Commissioner Stover's more than prepared and able to do that, and yet I talked about it also. So number two is to appoint Jim Henson as the representative for the City of Dallas on the Planning and Zoning Commission, returning in December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Commissioner Stover, you wanting to move that for discussion?
No, I'm due...
Okay. All right, number three is to appoint Harold Lynn Cole to the Republican Airport Authority for a three-year term in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just a quick note on this. I, in the past, I've had concerns with this nomination. Mr. Lynn Cole's been, his name's been brought up a number of times in the last, since Dave took office in two thousand and seventeen. The reason that I had to oppose previously because there was a conflict, he was working with Michael Baker Group, was involved with the environmental assessment out at the airport and all of the controversy out there, that, that conflict that just isn't now resolved, and so unable to support the nominee chair. And I just wanted to explain that, and I've been taking more positions and changing it, I wanted an opportunity to explain the change.
Thank you. Commissioner Stover, would you want to talk rather than before in the afternoon?
No, I'll be drawn for also.
Okay, you'll be drawn for. All right. Going through the new business thing, and this conclusion of our regular business, we have a new executive session, have none of the public who's signed up for non-attend items, and this time I'd just like to echo what's been said before. Thank you all for being a part of your county government, and as you heard, all of us on this panel, along with the county administrator, would like to hear from you. There's no higher priority, I think, for any of us, and we listen and hear from our constituents. So look forward to a great year, and I hope you have a great one also, happy and prosperous. And I'll take a motion this time for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Davis is our second, second Commissioner Caker. Any discussion? Hearing nine all of us in favor, aye. Which state adjourn?